Okay. Okay, I'm gonna call it the order of the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for the Town of St. Paul, September 17, 2024, at approximately 7:04. Our first order of business is to call, do the roll call. So Bob Lemon.
Here.
Kerry Betts.
Here.
Eric Doers.
Here.
Gary Sprague, here. Timmy Rub- is it Timmy Rubigas?
Yeah.
Timmy Rubigas?
I'm Perez.
Perez, sorry, Timmy Perez. So I think we have a quorum.
You're good.
All right. Next, we do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next agenda item is public comments, but we don't do anything public, so. So we'll move to the next one, which is the regular agenda. 4.1 is a discussion and possible action on amending the town subdivision regulation incorporating development plat procedures. And Scott, can you kinda give us a brief comment?
Yeah, I'll give you a very short briefing, and then after the briefing, I'll turn it over for you all to deliberate or ask me questions. But first, let me start off and say I look forward to working with all of you. We'll continue with our regular meetings, which I believe are on the third Tuesdays of every month. We'll probably end up having a special call meeting in October, early October. I'll end up having one or two plats I need to get before you relatively quickly, but then we probably won't meet again until November, but I'll keep you posted as far as how we're moving forward. So if we go to the first agenda item, 4.1, and go past the memo memorandum I have in there, there's a few things I wanna highlight in the purpose of the development plat. It was right behind the memo. I'll just go through that real quick. A development plat is required when no subdivision of land is proposed, but development of land is and is also required when the land is being divided into parts larger than five acres. So the main purpose for putting a development plat in front of P&amp;Z and asking you for your recommendation for council is I'm wanting to put a mechanism in place that is gonna strengthen the town's ability to oversee the ETJ. But a development plat can also apply inside the town as well. The development plat will be required when you're building any structure or improvement of any nature, commercial or residential, or when any external dimension that is enlarged on a structure that's within the ETJ as well. The provisions herein regarding development plats apply within the town limits and ETJ. Pre-submental meetings will be required with staff before an application can be filed, and then right below that are standards for approval. And if you turn over to the next page, procedures for approval, the Planning and Zoning Commission will provide a recommendation to the council to either approve, approve with conditions or deny of a development plat. And then the town council will either approve, approve with conditions or deny the development plat, and that will be the procedures for approving a development plat. Any questions regarding the development plat process?
Yes.
Okay.
My understanding was that as a type A general law city, we've got sale over signs, subdivision of property, this is in our ETJ, we've got sale over signs, subdivision of property, and road construction.
And nuisances, a nuisance as well.
Nuisances, but the way I'm reading this is if somebody in the ETJ wants to put up a shed, they've gotta get our permission to do it.
There's a structure.
I don't think we've got understated law the ability to do that, do we?
Well, I can tell you what I put in your packet as far as the procedures have been embedded by our land use attorney, and it is applicable. I think I referenced actual code that you can, I think that was in the memorandum.
Yeah, yeah, I read the code.
So yeah, you can apply it to your ETJ.
So you can regulate structures in your ETJ?
Well, you're not gonna, as far as the plating of the property, so the property could be platted already.
Yeah.
But if a structure starts, then you can have them come in and file a developed plat where you have oversight over what's taking course on it, on the property as well.
Really?
Yes. We did the same thing in Salina.
And so I've got my property, I wanna put a barn in my backyard, I've gotta go through all these steps in order to do that?
In the, inside the town limits?
Yeah.
Could be a possibility, yes.
So I've gotta get a Texas-registered professional land surveyor to do a boundary survey to draw up all these plans. I could spend more money getting all the plans to put this shed in my backyard than the shed cost.
Right.
Okay.
I will double check on that, Bob, and verify, but you can also make this just applicable to the ETJ if you don't wanna make it apply within the town limits.
Cause it would, I could see a small riot taking place up here by the people if every time somebody wanted to put a shed in their backyard or build a new barn or put up a carport, having to get a Texas-registered professional land surveyor to draw up all this thing with the, you know, like you do on a regular subdivision plat would be a little bit cumbersome for the general homeowner who's trying to just put a carport on his property and have to go through all these steps. To do that would be, and plus you've gotta, you have to hire a professional, cause you gotta, your plat has to have everything from all your neighbors as well on it, the way I'm reading this, and I don't know that as small as we are, that that's the good thing. Like it's maybe see it in the ETJ, but it would seem like the town would be carrying a, an HOA-type club over the head of it by the one that just put a small structure on the property.
So the concern obviously is how this is gonna be applied within the town limits.
Yeah.
And if Mr. London's building a shed, it's unreasonable to request this, and that makes perfect sense.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna reach out to our special counsel about if that would be applicable, but just reading the way it's, any structure that's taking place, it would apply.
Yeah.
But you also have an option, this doesn't have to apply inside the town limits, it can be just the ETJ. The other thing to keep in mind, if property is already platted, and it's in the town limits, and someone goes in and builds, you have, you have no oversight on that as well if it's already been platted. This would give you oversight.
Or, or doesn't our, our, you've got to apply for a building permit.
Right.
Permit's gotta be approved by our building inspector, it's gotta be inspected by our building inspector and signed off on, get a green tag, so is that not considered?
That would be, but this would give you another tool to use as far as overseeing development within the town.
So in the example of the shed in the backyard, is there like a minimum square foot of the building?
It says any.
Our code says, 100 or 20 square feet, I believe is 10 by 12, I think is what our code is. Anything above that requires permit.
This is, it's required, any, any building structure approved.
Yeah, chickens, you'd have to go through a residential or non-residential.
And when it, and this was from you, right, Scott, when it says, you know, I move to recommend that.
Scott, approval, right.
Has this been run by town attorney?
Yes, I mean, what's in your packet has been embedded by our special counsel. It's just not in the final ordinance form, cause I wanted to hear your recommendations first before I presented to council, I guess. I agree this could be overreaching, I don't disagree with it.
Yeah, I think it should be.
And what we may need to do is soften it a little bit. I'm just trying to position the town where you have a little more leverage, especially in the ETJ. So what I can do, depending upon the recommendation you give this evening, I can take that recommendation, share that with council, look at options for watering this ordinance down to where it's not as restrictive as we're interpreting it currently, cause if you do read it, it would be any structure.
Yeah, that's what I would agree with.
So I would agree it's overreaching.
Yeah, I would not like to see somebody who's already got their, their house on a piece of property, it's already platted, it's built with a permit, their setbacks are all good, and they wanna put it in a carport or shop, and they've gotta spend all this money to put all this stuff to scale. I could see having them come in for a meeting.
Right.
Prior to a building permit's being issued, making sure that you look at it and say, well, your application's lacking this, lacking this, we don't have an accurate structure, I need measurements, I need, but.
Well, let me ask, would you want this to even apply within the town limits?
Probably not. I would, I would like to see somebody applying for a permit, come in and meet with you with their whole packet of stuff.
Right.
As a preliminary to them submitting the application.
Right.
I think that would, cause people haven't been doing that, they'll just come in and plop it on the table and.
Right.
Let you check and.
Right.
Think the clock's ticking, but if they have a preliminary meeting with you prior to them wanting to do anything, prior to them submitting it, you can guide them on, well, you need, you know, you've got a checklist of some sort of what they need to do to properly apply and.
I, I, I need to, the whole premise behind it, actually, the development plat process all goes to ETJ. Which we. I don't want pitch ports at town hall because we're, we're overreaching in our, I don't want that, I don't want that.
A lot of people.
I'm trying to strengthen the town's position.
Makes sense.
Especially when our ability to oversee development like we used to in the past has been watered down by the state legislature, and so I'm trying to find every potential tool we can use to help us oversee what's happening in the ETJ. So what I can do, and it would be based upon a recommendation from this commission, is reach out to our special counsel. I'm pretty certain it doesn't have to apply to the town limits, ETJ, but if it does, we can find ways to possibly water that down as well.
Now, for the ETJ though, we don't really have much oversight currently, right?
You have a subdivision where they have to file a preliminary and final plat, but if the property has already been platted, then you don't have any tools except for this. So if I have property that's in the ETJ that's already been platted, this would come into play, and they'd have to file a development plat.
Okay. And that would give us oversight of, like, materials?
Just setbacks, drainage, typical things you would see on a final plat, you're not gonna get into the structure itself.
Okay.
But I would think that we would wanna definitely see what's happening on property when it comes to drainage.
Yeah, the state legislature has passed legislation that prevents the town from dictating, you know, 80% basing or 70% basing, I think of all means if their building material meets the international building code standards, whether it's stucco, hardy board, brick, whatever, then they can go with it.
You know, the goal is in the ETJ, to make certainly have oversight when it comes to access to public roads, make certain that, you know, if there's any drainage concerns, that we're addressing those drainage concerns as well.
Right.
And potentially you can come into the town and you don't wanna substandard stuff going in, and the test will get annexed in.
Right.
And you get more problems.
So is, would a way to water it down, as you say, be to better define any building as?
Well, that's what I was gonna ask.
A residence or a commercial structure versus, you know, chicken coop and back shed?
Right, I haven't seen it that way, pretty much how you see it drafted here, that's how I've seen it in a lot of different towns as far as, but it was mainly used in the ETJ. I've, I can't think of a town that I've ever seen it used within the public limits.
So, yeah, the structure part, I, the cost, I didn't quite think about that, but Bob brought up a good point, so that might be a deterrent, but I think we'd have to figure out a way to word it, maybe make it reasonable as far as what kind of structure are you talking about?
Okay.
Right, and then what happens if they put like a big square of concrete with no other structure than maybe a vast pulp hole?
Well, that would be an improvement.
Well, currently, the ordinance doesn't call for permit for any flat work, driveway, sidewalks.
No, they don't.
Unless they've changed or within census standards, there's nothing in the books that requires not work to get a permit.
No, there isn't. So would this, would that be developed then?
Yes. Again, the goal is to strengthen town's position as far as overseeing the ETJ. I'm not wanting to make it any more difficult within the town limits.
If that's the goal, then I would say this doesn't apply to anything within the town limits, and just have it for the ETJ, and that'll give you all the control over the, sooner or later, something's gonna have a wet election, this thing's gonna go wet, all this ETJ property's gonna want annexed into our city, cause they can't sell alcohol. If we go wet, they've gotta be in the city for them to sell alcohol, so that's probably not too far down the road. This would be a boon to the town for revenue, but up until that time, it gives you some say of what's going on in the ETJ.
Is there anything in the town where this, something like this might apply, maybe beneficial?
Well, it's in the ETJ, so.
No, I know that, but, but inside the town limits?
Yeah, the corner that's going on down there, they're developing that, I guess they've already.
Checker?
You're talking about, which corner are you talking about?
Down here, 1378.
Either the car wash corner or the other.
Yeah, and there'll be stuff going on at Parker Road once they, once they develop that.
Oh, yeah.
We, our ETJs are on both sides of Parker Boulevard, where his Parker Road, so Baron Cook's got the south side, I'm sure he's gonna be doing something with that down there when that all goes, so.
So that would be additional to what's already partially up, right?
Yeah, I mean, our ETJs are ETJ, that doesn't change, it's just the city's ability to have some level of control over what's going on in the ETJ, cause the way you're going through the growth out here is.
It's gonna, you're gonna redevelop a lot of areas.
So that's what'll protect the town, but over the areas that are not within our city limits.
Potentially.
Cause as well, potentially, pretty much anything in the ETJ is gonna be open to be commercial, Parker Road, it's not gonna be any ETJ property I can see that would ever come in as residential, all the ETJ property that I'm aware of is pretty, you know, it's 99%, gonna be commercial when they start developing it, so this will be the town's ability to oversee, you know, what you're doing.
Bob, do you think there's a possibility of a wet dry election that the town could generate enough?
Oh, with this road going through, yeah, somebody's gonna push for it. The last time, it was the gas station down there across the Sonic, and they paid a firm, this is in 2014 maybe, they, they paid a lot of money to a firm to go out and go to one of the wars with, certainly get enough signatures for a certain percentage of the people that voted in the last election, and it was, you know, 45, 55, 45% for and 55% against, I mean, it was.
Close.
It was very, very close.
Yeah.
The two before that, back in the 90s and 80s, they weren't even close, but this last one was really close.
I would think if you could potentially limit where the sale of beer, wine, or alcohol, that would probably pass if you had a wet dry election, because you wouldn't wanna write next to a neighborhood.
Well, and if, if my understanding is correct, a wet dry election has various levels, you know.
That's right.
Selling beer and wine in a, in a hard club, or up to having a specs hard liquor, so if somebody does a, if somebody goes out and forces a survey and gets everybody assigned it, the town goes wet, they're probably gonna push for the highest level if the town doesn't want that. Maybe the tax pro like, you guys go for, you know, beer and wine at a convenience store and drinks at a restaurant, and that's it. Before somebody brings in petition for a much higher level, it might be, might be a preemptive strike to at least determine what kind of alcohol sales is gonna occur in here, cause eventually it's probably gonna happen.
Yeah, so we could possibly generate enough sales tax could eliminate the property tax with that.
No.
You don't think so?
There has not been, to my knowledge, in Texas ever a wet dry election reducing or over any property taxes, I've not heard of, that's what they were saying, they said, well, your property taxes, you couldn't have to get people to sign the survey, but I think the research I did back then was, it may have changed since then, cause that was 10 years ago, but couldn't find any record anybody's taxes going down. City officials saw this money, they could build a park, they could make improvements to the town, to the infrastructure.
So they had other ideas.
They had other ideas.
So they had other ideas of making public improvements.
They made public improvements, they just didn't leave the town the way it was and.
But this is a small enough town of 1.2, 1.5 square miles.
Yeah.
That, there's really not too many public improvements you're gonna do, where if you're generating enough sales taxes, right now you're over 300,000, which is what, a third of the budget? So you would think that easily you would generate two thirds of that, that would be pretty much even to what your, what your entire budget is right now.
Could be.
Yeah, as long as you don't become aggressive in making all these different public improvements.
Well, they might be starting to concrete all the streets.
Right.
Do some big drainage projects, and there's, there's always things to spend money on that are good for the public and good for the town, but cost money.
So is there any, for this development plat, is there any benefit with stipulations or restrictions for inside the town, or is it strictly more beneficial for the ETJ? Now they've had this discussion. So I think, well, you guys haven't really hit too much, but I think the ETJ, the development plat for the ETJ is kinda like, sounds like it might be a good idea, but what about inside the town, does that have a place with some restrictions, or it doesn't have a place?
I think unless you reword it, when you say any, anything that doesn't, I don't think it's gonna be very.
My recommendation, if, if the goal was to regulate the ETJ, my recommendation is take anything in the city limits out of this thing, leave it the way it is and apply it to the ETJ and control growth.
Yeah, that's what I do, we just take out the plat to the ETJ, and I'll, I'll regularly run the town limits.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'll agree with that, see the bad or be more specific about.
More the structure, yeah.
All right, so I think we're in agreement with that.
So we need official motion on this?
Yes, a motion.
We will need a official motion.
Make a recommendation to the council.
And then we have to, there is a suggested motion, probably have to amend that to just add that this is for the ETJ and not the inside the town. Do you think the town, well, I have a page as well.
We go back to the memos?
It's, it's right behind the, it's right behind this page.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, under direction of the town council, amends the town subdivision regulations to incorporate development plat procedures exclusive to the ETJ, not including property in the city limits, as been presented to us.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All right.
I'm sorry, is it Kerry?
Yeah.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay. All right, 100%, so. So Scott, was that what you were looking for?
Yeah, absolutely.
Perfect. All right, so we can now move on to 4.2, discussion and possible action on amending the town subdivision regulation incorporating a minor, minor plat procedures. Scott, do you wanna go and give us a briefing on that one?
So what brought this to my attention, I think it's my first or second week here, we have a property owner across the street here, I believe it's the Georges, just under three acres, and they're wanting to sell the property, and I guess they were in the process of the town had told them they needed to plat the property, in addition to getting a variance. What came to my attention when they were talking to me about the plat that could be filed, they were filing, they're gonna have to file a preliminary and a final plat, which for a small piece of property, that, you know, that's pretty comfortable, you know, getting back to the development plat, asking for someone to file a preliminary and final plat on three acres for one lot is overreaching, and one of the tools that cities or towns use to expedite that process is a minor plat. So I'm asking the commission to consider making a recommendation to council to amend the subdivision regulations to incorporate a minor plat process as outlined in my memo. Now, a minor plat only applies to if you're, it's four lots or less, if you're over four lots, it doesn't apply. All lots have to, in the subdivision front on existing public street, except for right away and widening and easements, the plat does not require the extension of utilities to serve any lot within the subdivision, except for right away widening or easements, and that would, that would be accounted for.
Well, current ordinances allow the, I'm not sure if it's the P&amp;Z or the city secretary of law of town to waive a preliminary plat if it's a simple thing, and this, does this kinda do the same thing, cause?
Yeah, the minor plat, the minor plat is basically your final, final plat.
Okay, which currently our ordinance allows you to do.
Right.
This is just a little more defined.
So your current ordinance allows you to waive the preliminary plat?
Yep. If you read through there, it says if the, if the submission is simple in nature, you can waive the preliminary plat and do it in one step. We've done that a few times, it was just something real, real simple, you know, somebody had five acres, they had cut it in half.
Right, right.
There were no drainage issues or whatever, but.
I can't remember, Kerry, did you do that in your property?
I thought it was in there.
Yeah, I mean, that's, I thought you did, that's why I really mentioned that to you. Okay, all right, so there's that part of it, which I think we understand.
Why, why are they having to do a preliminary plat?
Probably, we had probably told them that they had to go through that, they didn't have to plat it at all to sell it, they didn't have to do the variance at all to sell it, but the buyer wanted both those steps done, so at least the first buyer, that one backed out, so evidently they're following what the first buyer required, and they're even applying it to the second buyer when they didn't have to.
And the reason this was even a problem, right, was cause it's actually eight inches short?
Oh, that, that for the variance, that's correct. But they're, they're selling the property, so.
Yeah.
In that case there, because it's R.1.5, and the buyer wanted to put a house on it eventually, they were told that the lot had to be platted. Yes, it has to be platted if a house is gonna go on it, but to sell it, no.
Right, but the, the first buyer was gonna put a house, and he wanted to make sure it would, he could put a house.
They could do that in the future without, you know.
That's where the.
It was already platted, cause it was part of a larger piece of property, the county didn't have a plat on file, really, amazing.
I'm sitting here thinking about what you, Bobby, you mentioned that, you waive the preliminary plat, I've never heard of that.
Yeah. Yeah, what's that on, what are these?
I mean, I'm certain it is, but I've heard where a preliminary and final plat can be submitted together, but I've never heard where you can waive a preliminary plat.
Well, maybe, maybe that's the way it works, maybe they are submitted together, but you do it once again.
They, they can submit, yeah, you can submit a preliminary and final plat together, but you have to do both.
But this would remove the...
Yeah, because this is, that's the whole purpose of a minor plat.
Yeah, just to expedite the...
This would be cleaner to have it like this.
Yeah.
Either or, but you've got this, this route to take in front of that.
So I'm going to ask that question tomorrow too. I've never, I've never heard of that before, so, yeah.
So the question is, who will be the decision maker on a minor plat? Is it P and Z? Is it P and Z and the council or is it just the town secretary?
Well, I'd tell you what most communities do, it's administrative. But that would be a big step for this little town because everything's going before P and Z or council. And again, the purpose of a minor plat is to expedite the process.
Yeah.
So it's based upon your recommendation.
I would think we wouldn't want it to go any higher than P and Z on a minor, because then you're just adding another, wait until the council needs. So that's, that's not, you're kind of slowing it down when you're trying to expedite it. And I said no higher than the P and Z, doesn't mean we can't, couldn't do the administrative.
I think we passed an ordinance allowing P and Z to approve plots.
I haven't seen that, but I haven't read that in depth.
So does P and Z, are they the only authority approving plots?
I believe that they did that because there were so many meetings going on. They had to meet for preliminary, they canceled, they had to meet for that. They can, there were like four meetings to get one plat.
I will tell you, that's not unusual to see in some towns for just the P and Z to have.
Yeah, as long as we're doing variances or they, they have to cancel that.
And as I said to you, I think that if we've done that, I've signed it, I don't think that it went to council.
Yes.
They just took it and filed it.
Well, I'm like...
But we can make it, make it official. Well, the way everybody's were doing something wrong.
Especially the development plat, the way it was written is that it would go before P and Z and council. Whatever you believe would be the appropriate for our recommendation.
Well, I think we decided that for the development ETJ, but I think the minor plat, this would make it formal. It may already be there, but...
It's, it's, we passed an ordinance for it to cut down the number of meetings councils have.
But we could replace it with this, right?
Well, that's also keep in mind too, and it doesn't matter which way you look at it, keep in mind too that that's one reason that we've set the P and Z to meet on the third Tuesday regularly, period, and then that coincides with the council, which helps A, kind of dictate with that shot clock, take some of that off, and then B, to also make sure that we can speed it along and we didn't have that delay that we've had in the past. So it could have seemed, even changing that.
And there's been times when we couldn't, even with the alternates, we couldn't get enough people here to do it, so it pushed it around.
Well, that's true, but sometimes when they, when it came to the table, they either didn't have the plat finished or it wasn't adequate. So it wasn't really, it's like we were holding it up if it doesn't, if it doesn't depict what we actually need to see, right? I mean, we had several votes this year.
Scott, is there anything in here about having a preliminary meeting with you?
Yeah, it's the same thing. And, and there are obviously going to be some other changes that we're going to make to the subdivision rights, because the whole development process should start with a preliminary meeting before you can file your application. We had a, what week was it, last week? We had a virtual meeting with a gentleman who is wanting to develop a gym type facility in the town. And in that virtual meeting, it was something he wanted to do relatively quick, he wanted to have this real quick meeting. And we had no idea of what he was actually proposing when we went into this meeting. So what we're trying to do is outline, you have to have the very basics, like a little site plan, or else you're just shooting from your hip every time you go into the meeting. So we're trying to put a little more clarity in what that process is going to look like. And so before you can file an application, there needs to be enough information there for a preliminary meeting with staff in order to give that individual appropriate direction, or else you're just giving direction off the cuff, that you don't have enough information.
Anything else on the minor plat? Do you guys have questions?
I was thinking of what you sent out in the email, had a, set a blurb in there about meeting and preliminary just to tell what they're wanting to do so we can know what direction we're going, but I missed that one here.
No, it's, it's under the pre- submental meeting.
It's pre-submental meeting, it's, there's no page on that. It's right here, right there?
Okay, okay. I was, I was, I was...
And did you make, is there going to be a recommendation, just go and count or P and Z for approval or?
Well, that was what I, my thought, but I don't, I don't know, you guys have a different thought.
I feel the same way. Cut down the number of meetings. Just on the, we're going to rely heavily on your recommendation, recommendation of the engineers, it meets all the requirements.
The way the process is going to work on plats, that's what I've always done, no plat's going to be presented to P and Z or council, with it meaning all, all our requirements. If it doesn't, it'll be a very short list and that list will, you would vote on that plat based upon the conditions of what's on that list. And that, that doesn't happen that often. I mean, there may be two or three conditions, but for the most part, you want that plat pretty clean before it comes to P and Z and council.
So Kerry, are you ready to make a motion?
I'm moved to recommend that the town council, to amend the town subdivision regulations to incorporate minor plat procedures and present it to the commission on line 1724 and in that, that the P and Z have authority to approve the plat.
Okay. Can I have a second, Dan? Second, okay. All in favor?
All right.
That was good feedback, thank you, Bob. Very good feedback. Everybody.
Okay, so we're ready to move on to the next, number five, planning and zoning commission discussion with staff regarding updates, future agenda items and stuff like that.
I, I kind of touched on this briefly at the beginning. So we are going to go back to our regular meetings on the third Tuesday every month. October may be a little different. We may end up having a special call meeting early in October. And then starting October 15th, we will have election equipment in this room. So this room will not be available and if we have to hold a special meeting with P and Z, it'll be held in this conference room over here. And this room really won't be available for meetings until after November 5th.
What's the election?
The general election, presidential election, council.
Haven't you brought it here?
Yeah.
Interesting. That's a first. Once you open that door. Bad ass.
Yeah.
The pitchforks and the torches.
It's a good thing.
And that's it. All right. Any, any, any thoughts from the commission on future agenda items?
Are there any issues that you've discussed in the past that you'd like to address or just like, first come back and revisit?
I was looking through the ordinance today and if you're wanting some feedback from P and Z on, especially if you, if you discover some sections in there, I know there's some sections that are kind of rory, they're kind of out of date because it was adopted a long, long time ago and mirrored after some plan was due. If you wanted to break it into a section and say, okay, you know, this section regarding these many topics, you know, it's four or five pages.
Right.
Have you all reviewed, we'll discuss that at the next meeting, but if you're breaking into small pieces instead of randomly flying around and stuff, and so you just focused on an area that you wanted us to look at and made recommendations on that, finite section of the ordinance, we kind of worked through it a little time and maybe come up with some good ideas.
Especially for me, you know, I know me sometimes we have something to approve, but a lot of times there won't be. So at least we have something to be constructive with this time and not just say, I don't see your face.
Right, 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 right. Productive.
And we did, in recent time, several months ago, we started with one section in the ordinance that came from a recommendation from the council. And I think it was fences or something like parking, parking was, parking, yes. But we discussed it, we came up with some recommendations and have no idea where it ended up going. I mean, obviously there has to be a legal entity in here that writes that we can say, hey, can you take a look at this, this and this or whatever?
Typically what, what I will do, no different than what I did this evening.
Right.
Well, say there's a particular issue that you want to address, if you want to share your thoughts about that, typically what I'll do is I'll draft a preliminary ordinance, kind of how I lay it out, this isn't a final ordinance.
No, no.
But this has been vetted by our special counsel on land use. So I'm not going to present anything to you that has not been, gone through our legal counsel. But if there are, I, I'll tell you one thing I think of right now, Bob, it's just the subdivision regs itself when it comes to plating in general, I'll probably want to review all that and bring that back to council for some other things as well.
Except for meeting every month, we might as well.
Well, that's something I mentioned to Scott that I wanted to try, and when I talked to Gary back, what, two months ago, was I wanted it for P and Z as well as the reservists. Since we have a regular once a month meeting, keep that one, even if you had a special, but keep that one. If nothing's on the agenda, pick an item and go training, whether it be just go through a code section or if we want to talk about fences or whatever. But that way the reservists are involved, everybody's involved and, and that way, when you have a vacancy, if somebody's here, then they can do that. And so you'll probably see that hopefully coming to fruition. I think I sent Gary an email on that. And so hopefully we can get that up and running so the P and Z is always staffed.
Right, and they're up to date.
Yep.
With the knowledge and that's a really good idea. Because there's nothing worse than, I haven't done anything for three months and I'm trying to figure out what they, you guys are talking about.
That's what you, Leah's an alternate, right? Leah's an alternate?
Yes.
And Leah, she, she didn't...
Well, I don't necessarily think that she's been, do they have to be sworn in on the P and Z, they do, don't they? So we'll have to do that with, with Leah at that point. Her schedule, because she wasn't sure and we just kind of implemented the reservists and everything being involved. So she's in the process of revamping her schedule once a month, so she'll always be here for that third Tuesday. And so having that ability would help.
Yes.
It's always good to have more than less. And so that would, that would be something, but it also, I don't want it to waste y'all's time for a reservist that hasn't been here in three, six months and, and they don't even know what's going on with you guys.
Right, right.
And so that's why I'm going to try to get them to be here.
Yeah, no, that's all a good idea, especially if we just start looking into ordinances. The other thing was that came up at one point in time was updated training. And I know that legal team had come up with that, they had 60 pages, I don't know if we want to sit through 60 pages, but I don't know. I sent you something that I found on the internet. But especially for new people, new alternates, alternates, they probably should understand the role of the P and Z and that's what the training was about, what you can and can't do and so on. And we might be a refresher too, because things change, obviously.
I've been to several, they should call the Texas Municipal Clerks Association, they had one four or five years ago and they held it in, they had it in Murphy, Murphy Building, so a bunch of people from surrounding towns went to it. It was a day long training, professional, they had a bunch of handouts and handbooks and it was pretty informative. I think Robert Simmons went to that also.
I can imagine that.
Someone from council.
So however we can do that, so we stay current with what, you know, those kinds of things, so.
Okay.
Other than that, you know, it just takes a while to get through the ordinances if we, if that's a decision, the way we want to go.
Okay. I will prepare a training PowerPoint and possibly do that at our meeting in October, maybe November, depending on what's happening.
I mean, if that's, if that's where, I mean, is that training just for us or would that be available to the public at the same time?
Be about available to the public as well, every once in a while.
Any other suggestions for agenda items? Hopefully not as crazy as last year.
Have you all talked about updating conference of plan in the past or?
Oh, yeah.
Any discussion?
Yeah, that's a pretty big potato.
But we had, it was started, we got a ways along in it, we just never finished it already. So I don't know if we have what we, where we left off. I probably have a part of it at home somewhere in the pile.
We did a survey of how, a first step was we hired a professional firm to come out and survey everybody in town to find out how they wanted to see the town develop. And then we were starting to get our comprehensive plan going to follow the wishes of the citizens, which is a little bit of the tail wagging the dog, but, you know, the regular layperson doesn't understand a lot of the steps and procedures, but the survey's still in there. You've probably seen it with all the pie charts and stuff, it's, it's pretty comprehensive. That might not be a bad thing to do again to see follow the road construction development when people are...
Well, I don't know what's that.
16, 17, 18?
Yeah, it was, it was four or five seasons.
It wasn't too far back, like most things are way back.
Yeah, it was 17 or 18, I think.
But we worked on it for probably a year, right?
Yeah, there was a lady out of Rockwall that...
Yeah. And that's the requirement, right? I mean, we're supposed to have that.
The conference plan?
Yes.
Yes, and they're supposed to be updated?
Yeah.
Do you have one? I haven't seen one.
I don't know.
Have you ever had one?
Yeah, I think so. I don't think it's anywhere near current. Current, exactly.
But I think that probably is another area we need to cover or get through.
If you wanted to see the past ones, Scott, you can probably look on your computer, all those scanned documents. Chances are that, how David O. Copland was scanned in and it's in one of these tubes. So there's an index that Ross put together, should be able to find that.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate your comments or...
As to, I mean, the main road to here is this road, is anybody, I don't know. I know it's more probably a text deal, but update the public on the progress of it.
So the closures get put on the website every day, there's going to be one. I make a meeting every Wednesday morning at 10:00. They give me an update and then I come and brief Scott. And so we're, we're trying to update that. So we're in the process about a month, month and a half away from being able to take a vote on CBI Plus, Smart 911 or NICSIL, which allows us, instead of sending out the newsletter once a year, we're able to send out those kind of notifications to whoever wants to sign up their phone numbers, it'll be paid for by the city. And then we're able to put those notifications out and you'll get them instantaneously. And so we're working towards that as we speak. So it's a mess. Most of what we've been, what I've been doing with them so far is drainage. The ditch that goes down Lakeview, I am all over them. And if you pay attention real close, so far you'll see that there hadn't been one cut across from Carefree to the ditch that comes down by you. to the ditch that comes down by you. The past administration didn't make all the prelim meetings, I'm a little late in the game. But I told them, I can't tell you how to get the water there, but I can tell you where to put it. So they are listening a little bit. I haven't seen that cut across yet. I don't think that's on the plan, so I think they plan on bringing it on back down here by Mr. West's property where it goes out to the core. Hopefully that we can get that water there instead of up in your neighborhood. So I'm, I'm there every week. The question is how do you notify our town? That's always been the problem. Is without that mailer, there's no way to reach the elderly population or something. So hopefully, once we get the electronic system up and running, then we're going to be able to get people to sign up. That'll be my job to get them signed up. And then if we could get, even if we got a ninety percentile where the neighbors could talk, then we could send out those notifications for you. We're just, it's, it's about, but we're getting close.
Oh, yeah, I understand. We've got so many people doing different stuff at the same time.
Tech dot pretty much runs over you. I've asked them to do several things and they're like, yep, and it never happens. That's just tech dot, right? And so I'm heading them with some stuff tomorrow again. We'll see what gets done out of that loop. I've got them to do a couple of small things, so if I can get them to do a few small, then maybe we can expand to something big. And if you run across an issue anywhere near your neighborhoods, bring it to me. Because I, I have a working relationship with, with tech dot up there at those trailers. And so if you bring it to me, I'll be more than happy to take your concerns to them.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Who made that motion was Bob.
Okay, who made the second? Oh.
I did.
He made the second. And then it was, we were all in favor, can't imagine.